Okay, we'll call this morning's meeting to order. The first thing is the approval of the agenda, and we do have some additions.
Go ahead, Jenny.
I'll make a motion to approve with the three additions.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the agenda with the additions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, we don't have to do that roll call thing today, though. I'll cut the meeting down by half or... Let's see, do you have any citizens?
Well, then, maybe I should add some other things to the agenda.
Do you have any citizens to be heard today that's items not on the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair, we're not.
Okay. Approval of the minutes from October the 6th.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Jim, second by Grant, to approve the minutes from October the 6th. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approve those bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to approve the bills and vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we'll go right into our update with Kathy and her staff. Cheryl and Jamie. I think you've been given an update already from this week's update.
Yep, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Yeah, I think Cheryl handed out all the latest data, so we...
All the news.
Pardon me?
All the good news.
All the good news, yes. So, of course, we continue to have, we have 2,000 confirmed positive cases in Clay County, and then 43 deaths. We've been at 43 for a couple of weeks now. And then our 14-day case rate per 10,000 people is 47.61. That's, again, the rate that we work with K-12 schools, so they're looking at that 14-day case rate. They have their school guidance. This is just one of the data points. There's many others. They look at their staffing and how many teachers they have out, how many, how much they can do as far as remote learning. So, we meet with them weekly, and we go over the rates and all of the other guidance that they have to utilize for their school learning models. Minnesota positive cases, 124,000 now, 2,239 cumulative deaths. Their positive rate went up. It's 5.2 now, reported on October 15th. And then the cases requiring hospitalization across the state of Minnesota is 8,900, almost 9,000 cases, and then 2,414 cases in ICU. Our Clay County, on the next page, we have the currently hospitalized, and there's three right now, for Clay County residents, so... And then you see the positive cases across the United States, the 8,271,000, and 223,000 over deaths. And then, I think Commissioner Mojo asked about the Cass County numbers. That's on page two.
Thanks for adding that for me.
Yeah, the 14-day case rate per 10,000 people. And so their collection dates are just a little bit different than ours, but the collection date from 9/22 to 10/05 is 57.46. So, their 14-day case rates are up, and then they're, and then they jumped. They have a collection rate of October 5th through October 18th, which is 111.6. So, they've jumped up significantly. You know, they're one of the, you know, states that has a huge increase in numbers, so not necessarily so surprising that they've really jumped up on that 14-day case rate.
I look at our 14-day case rate, that's collection dates from 9/20 to 10/3. Can you do much, I mean, that's, that information is already almost three weeks old?
They're...
Do we do much with that information? And let's say that's 47.61, well, that's three weeks old, so...
Yes, Minnesota is ensuring that we have all of the test rates for that, for that 14-day case rate, where North Dakota is not necessarily doing that. They're doing more of this real time, but less about that the testing is confirmed and on, on the, tallied in the, in the med system. So, our, our 14-day case rate is going to be a little bit delayed because they're confirming all of the information, so it's going to be two weeks out. We will often do a projection from the information we have, and we share that only with the K-12 superintendents because it's only a projection. It's not the official number that MDH posts. So, we do a projection for them of what we anticipate might be the, the case rate. But we, we stick with the case rate that Minnesota puts out because that has been vetted and confirmed. So, it is going to be different. And Cass County has a different learning model and different school guidance, so I'm not sure exactly what numbers they're looking at for changing their learning model. So, their numbers, it's not an exact duplication of what we're doing, so their numbers are a bit different. So, we'll see what they do. That's just one of their data points as well, but they're also going by numbers of teachers and students they have that are out, either a positive case that's isolating or a contact that's quarantined. So, those numbers are a little bit, it's just a number in time, or a number in that 14-day case rate that, but, it's just a comparison, but it's not an exact comparison. Does that answer your question, Mr. Chair?
Well, I just want to, if you, if you use that for anything, you know, because old information, almost.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, it's old information. The K-12 superintendents are fully aware that it's, that's just how it is, so...
Very good.
And then you see the tally. We always give you the whole grid that shows the number of total confirmed cases by dates of testing, and all the dates here, those no longer needing isolation, and the active cases. So, right now, as of October 15th, 334 active cases. So, you know, we know the numbers are rising, you know, we see, you can see what's happening across the country. They're climbing steadily. They anticipated this peak, and they just didn't anticipate that it would come so soon. So, the infectious disease and, and national experts anticipated, well, you know, have a peak this fall. That's where the respiratory virus is. We kind of see that peak, even with influenza, which is a respiratory virus. We always see that in the fall and winter. So, we anticipated that would happen with this coronavirus. It just came sooner than we expected. So, we're seeing a lot of hospitalization increases across 40 states. We're seeing a lot of cases across the United States. As you see a map, there's a significant number of increases, more than we had hoped for. So, the Midwest, of course, we're seeing rising numbers. That's about 45% growth in new infections just in the past two weeks. So, that's really, really ramping up. So, you know, with the cooler temperatures, people are outdoors less and indoors more. We just anticipated that we're going to have higher rates. We're also seeing, and it's across the United States, the resistance to masking. That's, that's kind of a challenge to keep that current message out, that we really have to continue. Right now, in our toolbox, we only have the masks, the six-foot social distancing, not gathering in large groups, you know, just staying away from people for less than 15 minutes. Those kind of public health measures are all we have right now until we get the vaccine and can distribute that out to the general public. So, our proven public health strategies are to test, trace, and isolate. And so, as you heard about our new testing site, and I think Cheryl will talk about numbers, that's good for our community. So, we have another means to get more testing done, and so that helps. And then, you know, all of our contact tracers are significantly busy. We are adding additional tracers. They're also working alongside Minnesota Department of Health, who has a number of tracers as well. So, as long as we can continue to trace people, give them the right information about isolation or quarantine to prevent the spread, that really is the best measures we have at this time. Any questions about all of that information before I turn it over?
Go for it.
Okay.
Good morning. So, as Kathy mentioned, we do have a community saliva testing site in Morehead now, which just opened up on Saturday, and this is, this is a welcome opportunity for Minnesotans to, in the area, to come and have saliva testing done. So, that means no swabbing, so there shouldn't be any discomfort involved in, in this process at all. It is at the former Thomas Edison Elementary School at 1110 South 14th Street. It is open Monday, Tuesday, Friday, from noon to 7:00 p.m., and on Saturday and Sunday, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. If you go to the Clay County Public Health Facebook page or the website, there is a link there where you can schedule a test during these times. If you're not able to do that, they also will accept walk-ins as well. So, as of Saturday, I was able to collect a little bit of data. They tested 327 Minnesotans on Saturday with a 9.785 positivity rate for that day. And then on Sunday, they tested 160 folks. So, the minimum age, I would say, would probably be about, they're saying ages four and up, because you have to be able to produce the saliva and put it into a tube, and of course, younger ages might have a little bit of difficulty with that.
That's a pretty high rate, though, isn't it? It's almost 10%.
It is a fairly high rate.
Of people coming in to be tested and have, are positive.
Right.
Scary.
This testing is free and available to all Minnesotans. Identification is not required. Insurance is not required. However, they are asking if you have insurance to bring that with you, but they are saying that whether you have insurance or not, you will never receive a bill for this test.
Do you need a proof of residence?
You do not. They ask some questions. Basically, if, if anyone has a smartphone, they take you through a process of creating your, your name and date of birth. You create a password on that link. They will ask you if you reside in Minnesota or not, and that way, that is how you will receive your test results, which is in within 48 to 72 hours.
So, if a non-Clay County resident tests and gets a positive, does that go on that county?
So, we've, we've worked with our, our Minnesota State, the State Emergency Operations Center, as well as, I sent information up to Governor, Lieutenant Governor, because what we, with this Red River Valley Task Force, North Dakota has provided over 12,000 tests just for Clay County residents at no cost. So, many of our residents, when we didn't have testing on this side of the river, were able to go to the static site, which is a site that was set up by North Dakota, paid for by North Dakota. They were able to get testing for free. So, over 12,000 of our citizens, North Dakota graciously was able to accept those, and we had worked with the governor's office in North Dakota to make sure that we could get testing done when we couldn't get it done here for long-term care staff, for our higher ed staff, for schools. So, to be good partners, I requested from Minnesota Department of Health the ability to allow Clay County, or Cass County residents to access this site. At this point in time, there's still discussions about that, so they have not confirmed that they are going to allow North Dakota Fargo and West Fargo residents to come to our site. So, I'm waiting to hear back. We did speak with, I did speak with the mayor of Fargo, as well as the governor's office in North Dakota, to just, because they were asking. The mayor was sure that there would be a number of folks from North Dakota coming over, particularly Fargo and West Fargo, to access this saliva test site, because they do not have one yet.
Well, since you don't need us identification...
Well, you need to state if you're a Minnesota resident or not. That's on the thing. So, it says if you're a Minnesota resident. So, technically, they could turn you away if you say, "No, I'm a North Dakota resident," or another state.
Well, and I agree. I think that it's important, and that's part of why I included Cass County in our numbers, because this needs to be looked at as a metro-wide issue. My question was just, are the, are the positive cases being reflected in the positive cases for each county?
So, Commissioner Mojo, in the data that I gave you, that was strictly for Minnesota residents. There were North Dakotans that went through the test site this weekend, but they did not give me those numbers.
Thank you. But technically, they will turn them away, is what we've been told by this vault group, that they can turn them away, because they haven't determined yet if they will accept, because it's Minnesota paid for, of course, through, through the CARES money. But because that they accepted all of our Minnesota residents, I felt like, when you think about over 12,000 tests, it's a significant number, and a significant number that were paid for by North Dakota. So, I felt like we could be good stewards and provide that same, same service back. So, I'm waiting to hear, and once we hear, we'll have more information.
Okay.
Any other questions on the, on the testing site?
Now, is the saliva test, is that going to be the new test from now on, pretty much?
It's, it's just another mode of testing, basically. There are still places that are using the nasal pharyngeal, which goes all the way up, or the nasal swab, which is just inside the nares, the nose, but now we have the saliva testing site as well, so...
Go ahead, Jim. Is there a difference in the accuracy of those tests?
We are told that it is just as accurate as the, as the swabbing.
And what does that accuracy mean?
I...
It's 90%ed, 90, somewhere in the 90% range, so, which is exactly what it is with the other ones as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here we go, Jamie.
Okay, good morning. I wanted to share some highlights from the media briefing yesterday with the Minnesota Department of Health Commissioner Malcolm, and then the Infectious Disease Director, Chris Ayersman. So, just to point out a few things, there, the Commissioner of Health wanted to note that there has been an increase in cases, that we saw over 3,000 new cases in Minnesota over the weekend, and that Monday marked the 10th consecutive day of 1,000 cases reported in Minnesota. So, really, just presenting some data to note that we have seen an increase. We've had a lot of discussion about testing and opportunities for testing, which is important, but she also noted that the positivity rate was growing faster than the increase in testing. So, the positive cases increase was 9.6% over the last week, and the testing increase was at 7.8. So, just noting that although we're increasing our testing, we are seeing a lot of community spread, and we are finding more positive cases in the community. Commissioner, or the Director of Infectious Disease, Chris Ayersman, highlighted some guidance on the Minnesota Department of Health for voting, and she said most importantly, it's, we want to stay home if we're sick, but that we should avoid crowds by voting on off-peak times and remembering to maintain that six-foot distance, that voting sites have infection prevention measures in place, and the risk of voting in person is limited compared to, like, grocery stores and gas stations. So, to not discourage people from voting. The Commissioner of Health also talked about that we're seeing a high number of cases as we move into, into fall, and they had hoped we'd have COVID under control as we move into flu season. She said this is a high-risk environment, and we should plan our holiday celebrations with caution. And Infectious Disease, Director Chris Ayersman, really stressed that we should be noting gatherings of eight, or excuse me, 10 or less, and trying to, as much as possible, remember about social distancing, even in our, social distancing even in our indoor gatherings. And then, the Commissioner also noted that we have things under control, for the most part, in our public settings, but it really is social gatherings that are contributing to the, the, the community spread. So, the things like weddings and just getting together with friends, you know, to go out for supper, as opposed to sticking with your household contacts. And so then, I'm going to go into some of the guidance that Minnesota Department of Health has as we approach Halloween. And they really are noting that Halloween is a celebration that people enjoy, but to try to help people make decisions. They've categorized activities for Halloween as low-risk activities, medium-risk activities, and high-risk activities. So, high-risk activities are the things that we typically think about, trick-or-treating, going door-to-door. They have what's called a trunk-or-treat, where people park in a parking area, and everybody has the treats in their trunks, you know, and you go from car to car. And then also, high rides with, hay rides, I'm sorry, with the general population. But those things can be done if we stay within our, our small groups. So, a hay ride with your family unit is a safe activity, participating in fall activities as long as you're staying within your, your family unit, and then maintaining that social distancing. The, the low-risk activities that they recommend are, you know, celebrating in your community with a small group of family and neighbors, maintaining the social distancing outside, doing things like a home scavenger hunt, a virtual Halloween contest, you know, celebrating by movies and treats in your home. And then, just to remind people that a traditional Halloween mask does not protect against COVID-19, that you need to remember to wear a mask that fits snugly over your nose, nose and your mouth for Halloween celebrations as well. And that guidance is on the Minnesota Department of Health website, as well as the voting guidance.
Okay. You must have something else to say, Kathy.
I do, but maybe I should be done. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, any questions for the group? Josh, thank you for that update again.
Thank you.
Stay healthy. Okay, I think we're going to take some things that are going to clear out the room, a little bit more items that involve people that are here. Mark, why don't we take your item? We have Mark, our Sheriff Mark Ampton here, who plays a squad car.
Yeah, thanks for having me this morning. My squad car was involved in a crash a week ago Sunday. It is not repairable. We are looking to replace that car. I've been in contact with MCI-T, our insurance carrier, along with our auditor. After speaking with our auditor, I do have a car on hold at Nelson Ford right now, and they're ready to deliver that to Code Four to be outfitted. As you can see from the numbers, the vehicle cost would be $35,900. MCI payment for us is going to be $2,620, leaving a difference of $9,700. After speaking with the auditor, we do have internal service funds available for my car currently, up to $20,000. So, we would easily be able to cover those, that difference with internal service. And the insurance carrier is also going to be covering the removal of the equipment and the install of the equipment as well.
So evidently, the insurance we have is not full replacement value, then?
Actually, it is, but they don't have another Dodge Charger on the lot. Therefore, we had to do a different style vehicle, which is what they had on the lot for us available, and it is, there is a difference because of that, or else it would have been a full, full replacement had they had another Dodge Charger.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You've got a motion by Grant, second by Jenny, to replace the vehicle. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for that, and this real quick for you body camera funding, just so everybody is aware. The auction proceeds that we took in was $55,500. The body cameras are going to be $44,524, putting approximately $11,000 back into internal service. So, we do have plenty of funds available to cover our body cams as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
On these buybacks and stuff, do we need Nancy up here for that, or?
We do.
Okay, all right. I'm just going to look at some of the other channel. What, what item are you here for in the back there?
I'm here for buyback.
You're here for buyback, too, okay? Mark's here for buyback. All right. Kirk's available. Everything else is buyback, what's waiting for Nancy, unless Kirk shows up.
Our committee reports, I suppose.
We want to do a year, so Grant, you're first on the list.
I had, last week, yesterday, had an area agency on aging meeting, and general information on what's going on in our region in terms of elderly issues, and everything is, is good, and I don't think we're scheduled now, there isn't another meeting scheduled now until next year sometime. I had a radio board meeting, and, and pretty much updates on what's going on in the region as far as communications goes, and talk, as usual, about the grants that are available and will be coming forward. And then we had a detention advisory board meeting last week also, and James and Josh provide a lot of information on what's going on with detention center, and, and everything is pretty positive. The construction, there were questions about, you know, the construction now that it's over with, and all, all pretty positive information. That was it for me.
Okay. Okay, we'll take Nancy, we'll take Peyton. You got yours ready? Affordable housing, Peyton from Dilworth is here, concerning housing at 215 Adams Avenue.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of the City of Dilworth to submit, to submit the proposal to correct the light and create affordable housing at 215 Adams Avenue. This property is going to tax forfeiture at this time, and we would like to do another Habitat bill at this location. 215 Adams is located in our Little Italy neighborhood, it's on the south side of BNSF, and it's on a corner lot, and talking with Jim Nelson over with Habitat, we think it'd be an ideal location for a twin home at this location, which is permissible in our, our one zoning district. Minnesota statutes lays out all the requirements that go into, you know, any tax forfeiture lot that has to be transferred over to the city, and one of the things that are one of the criteria that has to be met in order for it to be transferred over is the creating or correcting light and creating affordable housing, which this fits that criteria. It's a sizable lot at this location, about 100 feet, about 140 feet, and it's in substandard condition. It's a manufactured home. The utilities have been shut off there for quite some time. utilities have been shut off there for quite some time. Speaking with our fire department going to do a controlled burn there in the springtime, and looks to be a tremendous opportunity to get a couple of deserving families in there to begin their home in Dilworth.
Sounds like a good purpose to me. Any questions for Peyton?
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
You've got a motion by Grant, second by Jenny, to approve the request to move the property over to Dilworth. Any further discussion? Nancy, got anything to say, or?
I believe...
Do we, we need something from Dilworth other than what's presented?
We just need to declare it's bladed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post. Very good. Go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Mark, we'll take yours next. And it looks like it's snowing. You probably want to head back on the road again. We'll take the Yule request.
Yeah, definitely get nasty out there.
You may have to stay overnight here.
Oh, maybe not. Thank you.
He'll take his chances.
I'm here from the city of Yule in asking to take possession of some property that's up on foreclosure. And I know much more about what you need from me, but it would be very useful for the city to put a new well in. It's close to our water tower. We're having trouble with one of our two wells there presently, and you don't really have the room to place a new well in that location would be ideal. So that's part of the reason I think the city would like to take ownership. The house that's there definitely has to be removed, and we would take care of that.
Okay. Any further comment, Nancy, or?
Seems like it meets all the criteria for a conditional use deed.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Okay. You've got a motion by Jenny, second by Jim, to approve the request for Yule to take over this tax forfeit parcel. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post. Very good, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. And sir, you, Mr. Mulderham?
Yes.
Okay. You want to come forward? We'll do yours right away. Brian, I'm sorry to, I guess you're scheduled for nine, but this way you don't have to work, huh? Have a chair there, Mr. [inaudible]. Okay. Mr. Mulderham's here. He's got property, and he's asking to to repurchase this property. And I guess this is 1012 Ninth Street North. Is that the property we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
And at this point, there's $9,867.11, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, you ready to pay this back today, or?
Not today. I have to get some money out.
Okay, so how much time do we? Of course, we haven't got a motion on this yet, though.
That's last month.
Okay, you got anything to say? I mean, that was what?
No, I think if, you know, you can give them how long you're looking at.
Could be a part of the end of the week.
End of the week? Sure.
Or the end of Friday.
By Friday, okay?
And that's how much?
Okay, yes.
And before we do that, we do need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request that it, as long as it's paid by the 23rd?
Friday.
23rd.
23rd, I think.
23rd, yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, that this property can be bought back if you have the money available by Friday, 3 o'clock or something like that, at least by then.
Sure. Yep, 3 o'clock's when we...
Okay, so you you agree to those terms?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Post. Very good. So check with Nancy. She'll give you the amount you have to have there by Friday.
Thank you.
Brian, open quotes for snow removal. You didn't bring very many envelopes with you.
There is two envelopes, two bids.
Okay.
We had planned on having two people here.
All right, we got, what we're doing right now is the snow removal for the campus here. We'll be opening bids for that.
Okay, we have a bid here that sealed.
And you can announce the who it's from and?
Yep. This is from Baumgart Services LLC, Moorhead. They have their hourly rates and their proof of insurance.
So it's this bid by hourly rates? There's an annual rate, or?
They're all hourly rates that are per unit at different, you know, there's a loader, trucks, skid steer, and deicing. So all of those are individual per hour units, and then the deicing and salt options are per ton. So the numbers for the loader, I'll get the The loader is $185 per hour, per unit. The price for the tandem axle trucks for hauling is $125 per unit, per hour. Price for the skid steer is $100 per unit, per hour. The chemical deicing is $185 per ton. And then there's also an additional charge of $85 per hour for the truck to spread the deicing agent.
Who do you size how many hours each one works?
Well, the Joe typically will give them the amount that we would typically have them do. He controls that just by the, you know, the nature of the the snowfall does determine a lot of it, but Joe will hold them to whatever hours that we need to do for the for the event. The second bid is from JT Lawn Services, also of Moorhead. They have provided proof of insurance. The amount for JT Lawn Services for the loader is $155 per unit, per event. The price for the tandem axle trucks is $95 per hour, per unit. Price for the skid steer is $110 per unit, per hour. Price for the deicing is a lump sum of $675 per time. And then they have an additional, two items of payloader with a snow blower for $400 And another number for end dumps, semi, would be $110 an hour. And that concludes the two quotes that we have received. I would think by looking at the numbers that JT Lawn Services would be the low bid.
Okay. I think you're going to review these bids probably, and?
Yeah, they'd have to be reviewed and checked on the insurance and all the other stuff like that. But at this point in time, by the the three major pieces of equipment, it would have to be checked on on the difference between the lump sum bid for the chemical deicing and the hourly bid from the other contractor for the deicing. I'm pretty sure that Joe has the numbers from previous years of a typical event on how much that costs for that service.
Okay.
So I would say that when when Joe gets these numbers, then you can review them.
I'll make a motion to approve the bids and then pending review of the department.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny, second by Jim, to approve the bits after they are reviewed. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post. Okay.
Thank you.
With that, Kirk, I see you're here. We'll take yours next. And we're talking about amending a contract with Prairie Lakes?
Yes, sir. It's, Mr. Chairman, it come before you today. It's an amendment to the joint flowers financing agreement with Prairie Lakes. As you'll notice, third time we've done this. The purpose for the the amendment is that there are going to be some significant capital improvements at the facility this coming year, and Otter Tail Colony has agreed to float a bond to help pay for these. And essentially what this is, is just an agreement that we're we're part of the Prairie Lakes group. And so this is what this is for. I have talked to Tony downstairs, the attorney, to make sure that it's consistent with form and execution. And stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
So is this going to cost us some, oh, no direct cost impacts, okay?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, there's no direct cost.
Very good. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the request.
You've got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to approve the request to amend the contract with Prairie Lakes. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post. Very good.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, we did get some bonding money. Last week when I was here, I was afraid I was going to jinx it, and I didn't jinx it, so I was pretty, pretty happy.
I thought there'd be some trucks out there moving some dirt already, but?
No.
I asked you, they didn't send the check that day, did they?
No, that's, that's going to be a whole nother can of worms, but, you know, that's what you pay the big bucks for me to do, so.
You don't have to wait three, four years for that, that's?
No, we've already done that, so we're good to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, with that, we'll go back to item number three, which is the CARE Act committee update by Steve and Darren. I think we've got a handout that they've given us on that.
Yes, I have handed them out, yep. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. You should have two different forms. One came with your packet, and then this morning I also handed out an updated documentation, document based on some of the recommendations that will be coming here for board. Last time I spoke, and then I took all of Darren's thunder, so today I'm going to digress and turn it over right to Darren.
Yes. Thank you. As you know, on last Thursday, the round two of the CARES Act money was, the application process was closed out. An update on that is we received 20 applications. Of those 20, there were 16 that were qualified to a total of $160,000. Round one money went out last week as well, so that's already been distributed. Out of the 20, there was one that was applied that also applied in round one. There was one that was ineligible, and there was two that they only had one employee, so they probably should have applied during the first round. So that left us with 16 applications that were that were accepted. As you see, you have an updated chart here. That includes the two items that I was going to talk about as well. The first one was the carpet in the IT department when they're doing all the construction over here. There's three areas where they didn't plan for new carpet. Those three areas, I think, I don't know if you have that map or not, but basically that would be an addendum to the contract of $3,462 to put carpet in the IT area that they didn't plan for that when the first bid came out. The second piece is the, as you know, we started having our security guard over at the family service center in the lobby there. That started at the beginning of October, and when they went through the contract, they realized that they only charged us for one week in October instead of the whole month. And so that would be an additional $2,781 to pay for that, the whole month of October instead of that one week. I think, I believe he started on October 5th.
That's just an ongoing contract with the security there? I mean, that depends on COVID, how long that goes?
I think we got a three, three-month contract.
Mr. Chair, we're, yeah, we have, we signed a three, three-month contract, and we'll be evaluating that contract in November to see with COVID if there's there's funds that we can move forward with into the next year.
So the chart that you have in front of you would be if those two items were were included and also?
No.
Okay.
No, just?
I think I included that on the chart, too. I thought he was coming today.
I'm, I'm going to, I can present for you.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. And I'll go ahead and?
And so, I don't know, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if you want to act on on these first items. First, Darren first spoke on allocation of $160,000 for phase, Phase Two business relief plan. And so I don't know if you want to entertain these one at a time?
Well, I definitely think that we should, Mr. Chair, entertain these one at a time. I just want to commend the CARES Act committee for creating what round two looked like. As we've said before, it has been tricky to determine the actual effect on all businesses because of the pandemic, and unfortunately, we can't make everyone whole because of it. But I think that we definitely could offer some relief in some form or fashion, and I was encouraged to see the amount of applicants that applied for this. Due to time constraints, we won't be able to offer a round three, but but the money will certainly be used in ways that we've identified to help mitigate the effects of COVID. I would make a motion to approve the round two relief grants.
Second.
You've got a motion by Jenny, second by Grant, to approve the additional costs there?
That funding would come out of the small business relief category.
Okay.
And just a note, very quick note, that included Moorhead and all of Keweenaw County.
Correct.
Okay. Now, can we relate these all to, I mean, silly question probably, can we relate it all to IT, I mean, the CARES funding, carpet installation, stuff like that? Is that all part of the project and?
It is.
Well, what, are we talking about the small business piece?
Not, I think he was asking in the next, the next item.
Oh, do we want to act on?
Excuse me. Go ahead. I'm getting on the wrong one here. Sorry. Okay, we've got a motion. The first one that covers?
The small business, the round two, small business.
Small business, round two, okay. Any further discussion on that part before I get too mixed up? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post. Okay.
All right. Then the second item that Darren talked about was the IT area, the increased cost due to carpeting three areas that we didn't originally have in that plan, and that would be $3,462.
And I think, and maybe in response to the question that Frank was inquiring about if carpet would qualify for COVID relief funding, the way that the county courthouse was set up for serving the customers is not possible because of COVID. And so the recommendations from CDC required additional spacing. And in in making that sure that the courthouse could be compliant for that and open for business to come, we had to do some some moving around of that, and that would be why that would be included in that. It was, we would not have done those those room changes without COVID, and it really is something directly related because of it.
I think another point also is the work with their door in the IT and over here, moving some walls and everything. Some of that carpet was damaged in all of that, moving walls and stuff. And so it would be, you know, it'd be piecemealed in different colors and everything, so it kind of makes sense to replace those in different areas.
I guess when I originally looked at it, I was just thinking, you know, replacing carpet, $3,462 seemed like a, that's a lot of carpet there, you know, but? But I guess when you're talking about replacing walls and all that, I can see that happening, okay?
And I think the department that it's in there, we walked through that yesterday, and there are literally ripples in the carpet as big as this. And when you spend almost three-quarters of a million dollars on IT upgrades because of our remote work needs, you really understand that that department is growing by leaps and bounds, and we have to accommodate that.
If you can fit it under COVID, that's very good, I mean, very good. Okay. Need a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Grant, second by Jenny, to approve the additions of the carpet and the movement of walls and stuff like that, the IT department, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes, okay. Let's see, now we can jump into some other, do you have any other?
Oh, we, one more.
Oh, we got one more?
One or two more?
Oh, we have two more.
We have the security guard and then the IT family service center upgrade, the wireless technology. I guess I could maybe grab the wireless technology piece. We've talked a little bit about the needs over in the family service center. And I know there's been conversations about the need of possibly putting $350,000, $400,000 into the family service center to upgrade the wire, wiring, so that there are areas, I'm not a technical person here, so Tim, if I screw this up, you better, but to fix areas that may not be served correctly or adequately. And thankfully, there's been an upgrade that's been identified that we could upgrade these old access ports for $59,000 instead of the other larger amount. This is directly related to the additional units on the servers. So it's definitely something that we need to address. And like we've said before, came to a larger head because of the COVID storm. Is that you okay?
Yes.
And I think with the increase of the laptops that we've been, that has already been approved, this would certainly not only save money, but?
Yeah, I think the concern is with the additional Wi-Fi needs of those laptops with their current access points, there's a good possibility that it would crash. So we need to have, need to have that addition to make sure that we're covered.
There's not very many times we can address the same need better with $59,000 and $400,000 versus that. So I would definitely make a motion to approve that piece.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny, second by Grant, to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let me scare the Wi-Fi, now we've got to go into the, have we got all?
Just the ask, just the difference in the asks.
The top one, the 2781?
2781, for the month of October. They only charged us for one week in October, and they should have charged us for three. So that was the additional cost.
I'll make a motion to approve, change.
Okay, we have a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to approve the contract for the family service center for security. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Very good. Any more CARES funding we've got to cover?
That would be it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I think we're going to finish our committee reports. Jenny, you got something?
Thank you. Last week, I virtually attended the Buffalo Red Watershed Board meeting, and they had several things on the agenda. Our new appointee attended that meeting as well. I attended the CARES Act committee last week, and we have addressed that with our actions that we had today. I attended the SWCD meeting as well, continuing to serve the public in this new COVID environment. They're alternating days at the office so that someone's there continually. And then Friday, I attended Holy Cross Township's meeting with members of the Diversion Authority to address some road concerns that Holy Cross Township had in terms of what plans may go forward there. So I was able to meet with the township on that. And then I met with some landowners and then our county engineer on concerns on a centerline culverts, a road in Southern Clay County. And then yesterday had the CARES Act committee meeting again, so.
Okay. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, I attended the Buffalo Water Conservation District of Clay County meeting along with Commissioner Ojo, which she just reported about. That is my?
All right, I attended the Wild Rise Watershed Board virtual meeting on Wednesday. Again, they had a lot of items on there, they're pretty much routine stuff, permits and stuff like that, so nothing really more to report in that meeting other than just, like I say, routine stuff they had there. Friday, I went out with Matt Jacobson and we, on a concern north of Dilworth that we checked out. And that was, that was it for me. Okay. Just a reminder that on this afternoon at 4 o'clock, we have the small cities meeting. We're going to set up virtual stuff, it's also going to be held at the law enforcement center and?
I have a question in regards to that. Because we've told staff that they could attend via Teams meeting, will we reach out to the small cities representatives so that anyone interested could also do that?
We certainly could do that after the meeting, yeah.
You know, I certainly feel that that may be appropriate, given the situation that we're in. I don't want, you know, specifically because of the snow now and the roads. But if someone feels uncomfortable attending or if they're in quarantine, I want to have the most participation possible, so maybe that makes sense.
We will get out requests to all staff that we have from email addresses from other counties or other cities.
Thank you.
Yes, good, Jim.
May we attend virtually as well?
Yes, if I would, if you'd like to do that, we certainly?
Send to us so we can click into?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, I guess I probably took away some of your information there, I'm sorry.
That's all right, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead with your report.
Again, I was on vacation much last week, I appreciate allowing that time off. I did yesterday attend the Corona Relief Fund Committee meeting that's been covered. I do just have a couple, a couple items to clear up. The MCIT Annual Membership Meeting is going to be held Friday, December 11th, at 11:00 a.m., and that will be held virtually rather than in conjunction with their AMC conference. And so each year, we have to identify our voting delegates. Currently, Commissioner Wayland is our delegate and Commissioner Gross is our alternate. And so I would be looking for a discussion or a motion to approve our NCIT voting delegate.
And that needs to happen for the December?
For the December 11th meeting, yes.
And I have no problem making the motion to reappoint those two, but then because Grant's going somewhere else in January, I suppose we would need to revisit that.
Sure.
Also, that meeting, you say is at 11:00, which I noted too. But we also have the District Four meeting from 9:00 to 11:30 that day, don't we?
That's, that'll be this month on the?
Oh, you said?
December 11th.
December 11th, forgot to listen to that date.
Well, I'll make a motion to reappoint Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Wayland to that committee.
I'll second that motion.
Or as our voting delegates.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny, second by Jim, to appoint Grant and myself as the voting delegates for the MCIT meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Very good.
And then my second item also has to do with our voting delegates for AMC. As we know, our fall, our annual conference in December is canceled. But they are going to be hosting an annual meeting on December 7th from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Based on statutes of, by our bylaws of Article 11, we are allowed to have our five commissioners plus three additional delegates. We currently have had Dave Overbow, Matt Jacobson, and Kirk Rosenberger as our three delegates. And so, again, we would be looking for a motion to approve those eight voting delegates for the upcoming year.
So? Got a motion by Jim?
Second.
Second by Grant to approve the delegates.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Go ahead.
All right, and then the last thing I had was, Kirk mentioned, mentioned bonding bill did get passed, really with the transfer station. I want to thank the work that this board did on that. It's been an uphill, uphill battle, and also the work that Kirk and his staff did. Lots of trips to St. Paul, and you got us to the finish line, so congratulations for that. Also, just kind of a note, also is a very successful bonding bill for Moorhead and Clay County. There is $5.3 million of renovations for the armory. There are $62 million allocated for the 11th Street underpass. There is $17 million for flood mitigation. And so we'd really like to thank Representative Mark Horton, Representative Lean, and Senator Ekin for their continued leadership and support from here in Clay County. And that concludes my report.
Okay, yes, I have to totally agree with you. We had good representation, and we came out good on that bonding bill. Good deal.
Moving to close.
Okay, we've got a motion, close. Was a closed session by Grant and second by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session right now. Okay, we're back in open, in open session again.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize our county administrator to enter into contract negotiations for a infrastructure purchase due to COVID mitigation.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny and a second by Jim to enter into contract negotiations. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. With that, any further things that we're going to need to cover today?
How much care?
Everybody's okay? Very good, we're adjourned.